Good evening. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is brought to order on Monday, June 9th, 2014 at 7 o'clock. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects an interest in your local education is greatly appreciated. Item number 335.14, Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to call two students from Elliott Elementary to the center. Dayon Johnson and Jalen Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay right there and come back up for me. Mrs. Madell is going to read your bios and introduce you to the audience.
All right, let's start with Jalen Johnson. Hi, my name is Jalen Johnson and I'm six years old. I'm a first grader at Elliott. I like to read and play basketball. When I grow up, I want to be a preacher, just like my dad. And Dayon Johnson.
Hello, my name is Dayon Johnson and I'm a fourth grader at Elliott Elementary. I am on the safety squad and played on the school's basketball team. I am also an honor roll student. My favorite subjects are reading and math and I would like to become a pro basketball player someday.
Okay, very good. Now we're going to have Mr. Griffin's going to come and he's going to give you something from the Board of Education for your appearance this evening.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to give you a recognition, both of you, for your pledge of allegiance leading us tonight. But before I do that, I'd like to have you introduce members of your family that are here, Jalen.
My mom came and our principal came too.
I'm going to give you an award of recognition from the Board of Education for you, Jalen. Dayon, which one? I got the wrong one, I'm sorry. And Jalen. And like to recog-
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to recognize the principal of Elliott Elementary, Andrea Griffin. Thank you very much for coming on.
And if you like, you don't have to, you can ease out at any time you want, but we'd love to have you. You can put one finger up and ease out. Moving on to item number 336.14, roll call. Mrs. Madell.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Here.
Mrs. Schofield.
Here.
Mrs. Madison.
Present.
I am here and Mrs. Walker.
Present. Let the record reflect that there are seven in attendance, no absence. Moving on to item number 337.14, swearing in of the new board member. Or maybe it's a not so new board member. Mrs. Schofield, if you could go down to the center.
I keep showing back up.
And Mrs. Schofield is going to be sworn in tonight by her husband, Mr. David Schofield.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of Wayne Westland Community Schools, Westland, Michigan.
Of Wayne Westland Community Schools, Westland, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thanks.
Mrs. Schofield, do you have anything you want to say? No?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll wait till the end.
All right. Moving on to item number 338.14, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Berisi.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board of Education and our listening audience this evening, we're very pleased to bring two very special recognitions this evening. And first of all, we'd like to start off with item A, which is our Gates Millennium Scholarship recipients from Wayne Memorial High School. And I'd like to introduce Principal, Mr. Kevin Weber.
Thank you, Dr. Berisi, and listening to the audience. Just to provide some context, the Gates Millennium Scholarship, there are 1,000 of these scholarships nationwide and we were fortunate this year to have two of our students, Crystal Fletcher and Carlos Purnell, receive these scholarships. This is a full scholarship that covers the cost of their undergrad, graduate, and doctorate degrees their entire time, all the way through. It's valued at roughly $500,000 for each student. And so, Wayne, we talk often about Wayne pride and our students having Wayne pride. And both of these two students have demonstrated Wayne pride for all four years that they were with us and I'm no- have complete- I'm completely confident that they will have Wayne pride as they go on into their future endeavors. They demonstrated excellence both in the classroom, in the hallways, in the community, and in different clubs. Both of these students are student athletes, both of them were members of our upward bound program, both of them have done a tremendous amount of community service, both within our school and outside of it, and they're both very deserving of the scholarships that they've received. And so, I'd like to call up Crystal Fletcher and Carlos Purnell.
Hello, once again, my name is Crystal Fletcher and I will be attending the University of Michigan in the summer. I'm actually starting June 21st. I'm majoring in computer science and I just want to thank all my family and friends and the teachers who've guided me and helped me along the way, and then the Board for all the educational opportunities I've received, because without it, I wouldn't be standing here right now. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Carlos. I will be going to Central Michigan University. I'll start August 25th. I'm majoring in physical therapy. And I just want to thank Ms. Weaver, my mom, and Ms. Thompson, and also Mr. Kengas, because without them, I wouldn't be here. Even without the scholarship, they've been there for me since my freshman year. And I know outside of school, when I go to college, they'll be there for me too, because they're always telling me, keep in contact and make sure you don't forget me, which I won't. And I just want to thank all of you, thank you so much.
Okay, and we have, if you're- I'm sorry, Crystal and Carlos, if you come right back, we have something for you. If you want to, you can probably come down here so everyone can see you.
Congratulations and thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of your award ceremony tonight. I did some quick calculations. You could go to McDonald's and spend $20 a day for 25,000 days. Think about that. I want you to think about that. Isn't that- that's a good way to spend your money, isn't it? No. Good way to spend your money is to go to school, get your doctorate, and just go forward in life. And so, we have an award of recognition for Carlos Purnell and also Crystal Fletcher. The Wayne Westland Board of Education recognizes your achievement as a recipient of the Gates Millennium Scholarship and acknowledges your efforts at the Board of Education's regular meeting on June the 9th. And thank you. Who did you bring with you tonight, Crystal?
I came with my counselor, Ms. Tomlinson.
Right. And who do you have with you?
I brought my mom, Velina Stevens, and also our upward bound director, Ms. Thompson, is here, and my counselor, Ms. Weaver, is here.
All right, let's give them a good round of applause.
Item B, we have three more students that have received scholarships from the prestigious College for Creative Studies. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Kay to tell you a little bit about this recognition. Mr. Kay is the principal of our William D. Ford Career Technical Center.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Berisi, Dr. Salah, and the Board of Education for allowing me to recognize three students here this evening from the William D. Ford Career and Technical Center. In addition, I'd like to thank you for your ongoing support of the Career Tech Center, because without that support, these awards and achievements could not be possible. From graphic design, instructor Steve Paulson has once again instructed and guided a graduate to greatness. Unfortunately, Steve was unable to be here tonight because of activities involving his son, Michael, who has graduated from medical school. In his place is Liz Ritter from Graphic Design, the teaching assistant. Our first graduate is Jennifer Tagani. Jennifer is an exceptionally talent- is an exceptionally talented graduate. During her time at the Career Tech Center, Jennifer has won multiple awards, culminating in her $142,000 Award of Excellence for the College for Creative Studies. Jennifer's portfolio is extremely impressive, including many pieces from the North American International Auto Show and several gold keys from the National Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. Jennifer will attend college in the fall, majoring in graphic design. And Jennifer, you brought a piece to share with us. And Ms. Ritter, would you like to comment on it?
Yes. Obviously, we're very proud of Jennifer. She's an awesome graphic designer and she's also a very hard worker. And you could see it in her work. Her first place win for the North American Auto Show is this, and it's beautiful, graphic, very bold colors, very eye attention getting, and this won first place. Jennifer not only won first place in this competition, but she won second place as well. And her second place piece is totally different from this. It's more subdued, muted colors, it's kind of a collage type, and it is- almost looks antique-like. So, Jennifer has a wide range in her graphic design abilities and we're very proud of her.
Congratulations. Next, from digital media, instructor Gloria Joseph has developed and instructed two outstanding graduates this year. The first one is Kelly Aegis. Kelly attended digital media for two years. In her senior year, she was awarded a gold portfolio at the National Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. The portfolio included eight pieces of work evaluated by industry judges. Kelly is an entrepreneur who is working in the field under the name Kelly Marie Photography, specializing in weddings and portraits. Kelly has been awarded $40,000 scholarship to the Center for Creative Studies and will attend this fall, majoring in photography. And I know, Kelly, you brought a piece of work. And Ms. Joe, if you could comment on her work?
Yes, this is one of Kelly's works from her portfolio. All eight pieces actually were judged, and that's what got the gold award, not a single piece, but this piece in particular was a gold. It's a composite, we call it composite photograph. We don't use regular darkrooms anymore. It's a digital composite, which means it's put together on the computer. But all of the photography in itself was taken by Kelly, using all of her skills as a two-year student, including lighting, composition, concept, content, storytelling, really. It's an outstanding self-portrait and we are also very, very proud of Kelly, a very talented young woman.
The final graduate is Bethany Lilligren. Bethany has outstanding leadership skills. She is talented not only in digital media, but is a competent project manager. Bethany's achievements include an individual gold key, two silver keys, an honorable mention at the National Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. Bethany has been awarded a $56,000 scholarship from the Center for Creative Studies and will be attending there this fall, majoring in photography. Bethany, you want to come on up and with Ms. Joseph and take a look at one of your pieces of work?
This particular photograph was taken in the fall. Every year, we take a field trip, take the students out in the field, and we go to Henry Ford Estate in Dearborn, which is a beautiful place to photograph. At this time, they were learning advanced skills using strobes to really control the lighting, and it's- that's what photography's all about, it's controlling the lighting. It's a self-portrait actually of Kelly, and you may recognize that this is the Henry Ford house behind them there. But lighting is what's particularly impressive about this, the composition. It really shows her subject matter as a character very particular- in a very particular way. That's Kelly, that's who she is, and she's really done a good job capturing her. She's an outstanding leader in the classroom. She was my go-to person, my studio assistant all year, and we're very proud of her as well. She's a very talented young woman. Thank you very much.
You know, I would like to take this opportunity to commend the outstanding parents of these graduates, and if those parents could please stand up. When you see students like this, the support of your child's education and their future growth is evident and appreciated, well done. Well done, parents. Thank you once again, instructors. Thank you once again, graduates. Good luck to you and congratulations. Thank you.
If the three of you can come down to the center, we have something for you as well.
Well, Mr. Kay has introduced your parents and done everything else, so I guess you can go sit down now in just a moment. I would like to give you this award of recognition. You have shared your talent and creativity with us tonight and we appreciate it so much and we're so thankful for our students. So, we want to give this one, this award to Bethany Lilligren, Kelly Aegis, and Jennifer Tagani. Thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Moving on to item number 339.14, citizen comments, agenda items only. Mr. Firth. Good evening.
I just had a question about the same question I had about the last meeting, which was, I wasn't notified about my item being added to the agenda, and I was just wondering why. No one answered my question, so I just wanted to know why I wasn't notified. And so then, in the future, it doesn't happen again, but I think that was all I had. Well, I'll see you on the other comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Beggs.
The first thing on the agendas, I was wondering why the special meeting agendas is not placed on the website, just the regular meeting agendas? Just to let you know, I was looking for the special meeting agendas. Also, last month, when Citizen got up and commented, Trustee Weaver interrupted him, and again, you didn't say anything to stop him, interrupt him, or say out of order, anything about that, which they're not supposed to be interrupted while we're talking. The special meeting of May 19th, which is on page 21 and 22, after a very successful second interview with Dr. Hamala, Trustee Weaver entertained a motion- or made a motion to accept her as the next superintendent. Madam President, you said that there was a motion on the floor, and then I got confused. Ms. Madell, you asked and said, before we start making any motions, I think we need to ba-ba-ba. There was already a motion on the table, so it seems irrelevant to make that statement before we start making motions. And then, Mr. Griffin, you said that you had already resolved your issues, you were confident that she was your candidate, you were prepared to make a decision that night, you liked to move forward with that decision, you just wanted it to be unanimous. I was just wondering why you didn't second the motion then, when it was first put on the table? And your explanation of, the reason I didn't second the motion was because I wanted further discussion. Procedurally, when there's a motion put on the table, there's two things that happen. Either there's a second or the motion fails. If there's a second, the next thing opens up for discussion. You can second a motion, have discussion on it, and then not favor the motion. And you did that when Mr. Goji, back in June, put on the table for discussion for financial management. You didn't agree with him, but you always said, I encourage discussion, I discourage- or I encourage further communication, even though you disagreed with him. So, I just wondered why there was a disagreement there. And then, Mr. Buckaloo, you said that Ms. Hamala had the overall approval of the Board, that you were confident with her, and all the things that she had said didn't change your mind, and that we should move forward. I was wondering why there wasn't a second on his motion as well. So, I just want to remind you, from a procedural standpoint, and sitting back and watching it on television, when someone puts a motion on the table, the next thing that should follow is simply a second, or it fails. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beggs. Anyone else? Moving on to item number 340.14, consent agenda.
Move approval.
For.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mr. Griffin. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question pertaining to human resources. I noticed that we are doing some terminations. How confident are we that we will be hiring these people back before the end of the summer or before the school starts?
I believe most of them will be rehired, but I think that there are 11 on the agenda.
Right.
I don't believe all 11 will be rehired.
All right. Is it because of what they teach? Is it a program that we are phasing out, or do we- are you aware?
Yeah, I believe it's due to the evaluation.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I also have another comment, that I will be voting on this consent agenda. I have read the notes, I have viewed the tape online, so I feel confident in my ability to vote on the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the meeting that I missed due to a major stomach virus.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield.
I'm going to abstain since I was not here for those minutes, for those meetings.
I vote yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect, 6-0 with one abstention. Moving on to item number 341.14, review and approval of human resources item. Mr. Larson Schiller and Mrs. Bow.
Okay, actually, Madam President, I'll turn this over to Dr. Berisi. We have a couple of people in the audience.
Okay.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board, we bring a recommendation to you this evening for Director of Human Resources, and that is Ms. Rebecca Peck. And Mrs. Peck is with us this evening in the audience. She comes highly recommended, has been through the interview process, and been vetted quite well. And I'll just tell you a little bit about her. She has a Bachelor's of Arts degree in Educational English and Educational Leadership, Master's degree from Madonna. She's held a teaching position, academic advisor, principal, and HR director for one of our neighboring school districts, and we're very pleased to be able to make that recommendation to you this evening.
Okay. I need someone to put a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, supported by- I couldn't catch the- okay. Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let the record reflect a 7-0 vote. Ms. Peck?
Congratulations.
We'd like to say a few words.
I would like to thank the Board of Education and its administration for this opportunity. I look very forward to it and know that I will serve the staff, students, community, and parents and family of Wayne Westland Community Schools to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome to the Wayne Westland family. Item B.
Yeah, next, item B. We bring a recommendation to you this evening, Madam President, which is the Assistant Principal of the William D. Ford Career Technical Center, and that is Mr. Daniel Calhoun. And Daniel is with us this evening as well. Mr. Calhoun has a significant presence in the building, as many of you already know, and Mr. Calhoun has been through the vetting process, the interview process, holds a Bachelor's of Science degree in social work and a Master's in social work, and he is the recommendation of all of us as Assistant Principal for the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. So, we're asking you to approve that recommendation as well.
Thank you. A motion is in order.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo.
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Schofield.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Calhoun. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yes, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Berisi, Dr. Parsali, my principal over there, Steve Kay, for allowing me to be able to serve as the Assistant Principal at William D. Ford Career Technical Center. I look forward to working with the students, their parents, the staff, and this great school district, so thank you very much again.
Thank you. Okay, attached on page 43 and 44 are the non-renewal of instructional contracts.
Do you need me to read them?
I don't think so.
Okay. Do you have any?
No, this was the- I already answered. Most of these will be recalled.
All right, but do you need me to read this?
No.
Okay. Motion is in order.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
I reluctantly vote yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, 7-0. Motion passes. Item D, please.
Okay. We have- We have a resolution, non-renewal of a probationary instructional contract for Rebecca Pummel. And I believe that she is here tonight.
And are we still going in? We still need to go into a...
I believe so.
All right. So I need a motion. We have, for the next item, we're going to have to go into closed session.
All right. This, we are voting to come back into open session. Mrs. Madison? We are voting to come into open session.
Yes.
Are you voting yes? Okay. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. So, item D.
Motion.
So are we ready to make the motion?
Motion's already made.
So do we?
No, you have to make it in open.
You have to make the motion.
Make, okay. So...
I move previous question.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Weaver.
It needs to be stated.
Yes.
We have to state it.
No, not previous question, so...
So state the, what the motion is, so...
I make the motion that this board, after hearing both sides of the dispute, now come to a vote on this particular issue.
Non-renewal.
Non-renewal, yes. Thank you. I'll take care of my own. I'll take care of my own motion. That we come together to vote on the non-renewal of probationary instructional contract for Rebecca Pummel.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a support.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Griffin. Okay? Now we need to vote on the motion.
Before we vote, can we clarify what yes and no mean?
A yes vote, the act, the motion is to vote on non-renewal of probationary instructional contract for Rebecca Pummel. That's the...
So a yes vote means you're in favor of non-renewal? And no vote means you're not in favor? That was the clarification I was asking for.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Roll call, yes, any other discussion?
Some discussion.
Okay.
Probably the toughest decision that a board member has to make, at least in my opinion, is that of dealing with employees. But as I look at it, from my perspective as a board member, who's someone in twenty-five years who dealt with this, you know, I think, Mrs. Schofield, you said it appropriately, that we have an option. We, I mean, I feel, I have a feeling, a deep feeling, about treating probationary employees, in this case, a probationary employee fairly. But I also have a deep obligation to this community to make sure that the most successful teachers are in the classroom. And I don't make those evaluations. We have an administration, right down to the Assistant Principal level, that does that. And I have to rely on them unless I see some totally misleading procedural mistakes that are made pursuant to the statute. And I don't see that here. I've heard the discussion. And the discussion doesn't show me those kinds of mistakes here. And so if it comes to that kind of a situation, I have a decision to make, and I'm willing to make that up here. And that's why I second the motion. And I want the public out there to know that that's why I second the motion, and that's why I'll be voting for the motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I just want to discuss my concern with supporting documentation for clarification rather than discussion concerns me. And I'm concerned when we start talking evaluations and only being presented one, but there's discussion of several. And I just want that on the record.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
No.
I vote no. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record reflect. Five two. Five two.
Five two vote. Moving on to item number three four two point one four, review and approval of business services.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we have the two thousand thirteen fourteen budget amendment for your approval. I would just say that there is an overall, in your booklet, on page one, you can see that there's an overall decrease in revenues of about three hundred thirty-five thousand, increase in total expenditures, about a hundred and thirty-two thousand, resulting in a decrease in fund balance of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars over the January amendment. Primary reasons for the revenue decrease is that we had a adjustment from prior year's special education funding of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we also received the increase due to the Inkster dissolution, which brings in ten percent for the students that attend the district for a period of ten years. And that's two hundred and four thousand dollars. So the offset was about the difference. Increase in budgeted expenditures, a hundred thirty-two thousand, primarily due to a decrease in salaries as we get through the year, decrease in salaries and benefits. As we get into the year, we have contracts, teachers are in contracts, we're able to run a accrual, contract accrual, and we're able to get much closer on salaries as the year goes on. And there was a large increase in utilities. You know, we had planned basically on historical costs over the years. And we actually did have a little bit of an increase built in this year, but we ended up having about a six hundred thousand dollar increase. And many districts around the state are experiencing the same thing, because we had to purchase on the open market. So we had total revenues amended, one hundred and one million, three sixty-six, two seventy. Expenditures of one oh three eight eleven eight seventy-three. Projected operating deficit for the current year, thirteen fourteen, is two point four million dollars. Would leave us with an ending fund balance of two point seven million dollars. One thing that I want to point out on a budget, you can't budget to the penny. We're not going to spend all of this money. You know, I do provide you a monthly memo. And in that memo, I outline some areas that we have not spent the budget at this point in time, and we don't intend to spend the budget. One area is maintenance and operations. Their budget is favorable, about six hundred thousand dollars. And there are other areas that I mentioned in the memo. I fully expect our ending fund balance to be probably up to about four million dollars. So we should have a million to about a million point three positive once we close the year. So we should end about four million dollars, which will help when we go into the budget discussion. But it won't be reflected in that. Answering, questions?
Any questions?
One comment. Our fund equity is getting rather low. It's below what we set, what the board set it should be.
Yes.
We wanted five to ten percent. It's certainly below what the state recommends. And I've heard some estimates of maybe fifteen percent.
Yes.
But this is a comment. This is where we're at.
Yes.
And I've heard, and I believe, that the district is turning a corner, moving in the right direction. And even though that fund equity is going to be below what we'd like to have, that's where we're at. And we'll do better.
I'll probably make the comment during the fourteen fifteen budget hearing. But I think it's important to note that our negotiations, during negotiations in March of two thousand twelve, we stated we knew that we would have a structural deficit in thirteen fourteen. And we projected that deficit to come out of a structural deficit in fourteen fifteen. And we're on target to do that. So our structural deficit going forward should be resolved. If we come in at four million dollars, although you're going to see a deficit budget for fourteen fifteen, I fully expect it to be positive.
So we need a motion on item A? Moved by Dr., moved by Mr. Buckaloo?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Griffin? Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, seven zero. Item B, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Now we're going into the budget hearing part for fourteen fifteen. This is where we actually have the hearing. You'll have a resolution down at item three forty-two point fourteen D. So this will be the hearing where we can have a discussion. And then later, I'll ask for a motion.
Okay, so you don't need a vote on this one, this particular one?
No.
Okay.
This is just... In your packet, you have the fourteen fifteen general fund operating budget. You know, I do have copies here. Pass them out, or somebody wants them.
They can, we all have them up here, so.
I have a PowerPoint that will summarize much of what's in the book. I'm going to try to hit the highlights. But what we're reviewing right now, we do not have a final budget from legislative school aid budget at this point in time. And, you know, there are some differences between the House, Senate. What I am presenting to you is the executive budget. There's a budget that was presented in February. That is, hopefully, would be the lowest amount as far as the budget goes. So hopefully, we'll have positive when it comes out. And I can report that to you in a later date. So what we're going to look at, I just want to give you a summary, is a increase of per pupil of a hundred and eleven dollars per pupil. That will take us up to seventy-one eighty-seven. Again, we are the, among the lowest funded districts. We are at the base. Our FTE, we're counting, we're projecting a fifty student loss for fourteen fifteen. The current year, we actually had an increase of six students. I'll go with that a little bit more as we get into this. Our retirement rate will increase from a total rate of twenty-nine three five up to thirty-three point nine nine. And I'll explain that a little bit more, where with the legislation is that, it's called one forty-seven C, MIPSers Funding. We get, we will receive school aid for the amount over the base of about twenty-five percent. So the amount going from twenty-five to, let's say, thirty-four, nine percent, we're going to be funded on that. And I'll highlight that. Again, this year, we were funded on the amount from twenty-five to twenty-nine three five, so about four and a half percent. So our MIPSers Funding for that amount will increase from current year, about three point five million, to next year, approximately seven million dollars. So when I talk about the increases, you're going to see a lot of the increase has to do with the MIPSers Funding. All right. And to the PowerPoints. Okay, the, this is page one in your budget book. What I just want to highlight here is that the proposed budget for fourteen fifteen continues the full program of choices available to students in the current fiscal year, thirteen fourteen. We're projecting total general fund revenues of one hundred and five million, expenditures of one hundred and five point four. Again, you know, we're projected to have about a, based on budget for this year, budget going into next year, we're looking at a ending fund balance of about two point two million dollars. That would be about two percent, as Mr. or Trustee Buckaloo pointed out. That's well below the five to ten percent and the fifteen percent recommended by our auditors. There is, as you know, a Wayne County has an enhancement millage on the ballot in August. That would bring in four point seven million dollars. With four point seven million dollars added to the two point two, would be well within the five percent. And our assumptions, again, were based on the governor's proposal of a hundred and eleven dollars per pupil. MIPSers Funding increased from twenty-five percent to thirty-three point nine nine. We'll receive funding for this, so it's a flow-through, eleven million dollars. Property taxes have decreased, but it looks like this past year, we normally talk about uncollectible taxes declines. We actually, this year, only had delinquent taxes of about thirty thousand dollars. So it looks like possibly we've hit the bottom. Pupil account, again, is based on a fifty student decline. Of all things, that is the major thing that we have to watch. Anything above fifty student decline, you're looking at seventy-two hundred dollars per pupil. And we'd have to adjust that. So we're based on fifty student decline.
How confident are you on this increase?
Which increase?
The a hundred and eleven dollars.
A hundred and eleven, very confident. It could be higher. We've heard, you know, the, I believe the House was a hundred and twelve. We've heard higher from the Senate. But we won't, we have to base it on the hundred and eleven, which we're positive on. We think it'll be higher, though.
All right, because I'm a little leery when I hear things like this, because I've heard it in the past and then have the money taken away from us. And so that's why I'm asking, how confident are we that this is a possibility?
The hundred and eleven, we're very confident on, because that is the lowest amount that we've heard. The House and the Senate is higher than a hundred and eleven.
All right, in other words, the money is sitting there, and hopefully...
Minimum of a hundred and eleven.
Okay.
That's... Something changes, we'll tell you.
Well, I was going to say, we'll be back here amending the budget, then.
I think you'll amend it up.
Is the budget...
We'll be amending it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're very confident of that.
Yes.
As opposed to amending it down?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chairperson? I have a question. Through the chair to Mr. Lawrence. I want to talk just for one moment about the local property taxes. In the last two years, we've lost significant amount of money from the local property taxes and the downgrade of our, of assessments, right? Can you give us some figures projected from last year, two thousand thirteen fourteen, and this year, percentage-wise, what we're down in local property taxes because of lowered assessments in our community?
Yeah, and we'll talk about that a little bit when we get to the tax levy. But it looks like overall, we're down three point one percent.
That's for this year?
This, for this year.
Projected year? What about, what were we down last year?
I thought it was eight.
I got five percent error.
Eight. Yeah, it was eight, overall.
Okay, eight, all right, thanks. All right, thank you, Madam Chairperson.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. If you guys have questions as I go, just ask.
I just missed that one, I'm sorry.
Okay. On to the expenditures. And the reason why we are resolving our structural deficit, as we all know, we've talked about, is our collective bargaining agreements call for, took five percent. Everybody in the district was reduced five percent. There are step freezes for everybody except for Local Four and WISA, Secretary's Union. And what we offer to the, each unit, is to come to a target third percentage. And each one met it a different way. So staffing, we're looking, right now, there are eighteen... Um, staffing, we're looking, uh, right now there are eighteen, uh, we have eighteen retirements in the general fund, and we're looking at a reduction of five positions due to staffing and enrollment. Benefits, the medical insurance, we're on the hard cap. Uh, the hard cap went up approximately three percent due to the inflation in medical. Uh, so we're looking at single of fifty-eight, fifty-seven. Two-person is a new category this year. So we did see a higher increase due to that, because, uh, one, uh, two-person was eleven thousand three eighty-seven, fifty, uh, and they increased it to twelve, uh, two fifty. And, uh, family is fifteen seven, uh, or nine seventy-five, twenty-three. And what we do is, uh, we have a, what's called a help, uh... A, we, we pay a high deductible and we fund up to this amount, so this is the amount we'll pay in insurance. Our premiums are actually lower than this, so we're able to, um, give each member that is on insurance, uh, health safety, or, yeah, safety, or...
Savings.
Savings, thank you. I was missing that. An HSA account, I should've said that. Um, so, um, I'm happy to say that we're able to fund everybody's HSA a little bit higher than the current year, because our increases for Mesa went up about, uh, two percent. The, uh, cap went up three percent, so that's good news. Uh, the MIPSers rate, again, is thirty-three point nine-nine. That's why used for budgeting. Uh, that is the highest amount. We have, people select different amounts, uh, based on, you know, if you started after two thousand and ten, you could be on defined contribution versus defined benefit. Um, this is usually an adjustment that we make at the January amendment, and again, what you saw in the June amendment. That's how we're able to decrease, but for budgeting purposes, we go at the maximum amount. Sorry, supplies. Textbook budget was increased, uh, in the current year to buy for next year for planning purposes and increase next year, a total of four hundred thousand dollars primarily for ELA tax. Uh, this money is going to be used from the building and site fund. We have building and site fund that we use for, you know, maintenance. We decided to prioritize and put that into textbooks going forward. Uh, utilities, again, due to the unusual weather conditions, in the current year, we in, we had to, we're six hundred thousand dollars over budget. Instead of just straight lining it, um, we're hoping for a better weather, uh, maybe a little warmer. Uh, so what we did is we did a two-year average. So it's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars over historical, taken out last year, but we're, um, hopefully this will be something that will come back in June next year and say it was a positive. Uh, transportation, I do just wanna point out that, uh, our district's fleet is aging. Uh, we lob our buses with the bond. Uh, we have approximately forty buses that are sixteen years old. Um, some approaching three hundred thousand miles. Uh, we do cost-benefit every year, determine, you know, if we should replace them. Uh, of course, we come up saying we should replace some. The police, state police, does an inspection to find out roadworthworthiness each year. Uh, last year, as we stated, there were four to five, what they call a red tag, which means that you have to do a repair, and then you have to get it re-inspected before it goes on the road. Uh, at that time, we came to you and said, "Some of these repairs are gonna be ten, twelve thousand dollars." At that time, we agreed to lease four buses for two years at fifteen thousand dollars a year. Again, we had, um, five red tags this year. Uh, we did a cost-benefit. You know, there, um, you know, we, we have a bus that has a cracked frame that is out of service. That is one of the buses with a red tag. We have other buses that we have to replace the engine, we have to do bodywork. Uh, so we are, uh, going to lease four more buses, so lease, lease four buses, eight buses this year in total. And that's built into the budget. Any questions on any of that? Okay, thank you. Uh, then, I'm just giving you an overall comparison to, um, the June amended budget, which you just approved, uh, compared to the proposed budget for next year. Uh, you can see the, you know, as I mentioned, revenues are up primarily because of the increase in the MIPSers, uh, funding that offset. That's about three million dollars, and you can see that's about our increase. And you'll see that reflected in almost every area going, uh, you know, in expenditures, 'cause we're, let's say, twenty-nine point three-five, we're projecting at thirty-three point nine-nine. So we're looking at ending fund balance of two million, two forty-five, seven sixty-nine. Again, I think that will be much better once we go to the January amendment, um, when we get all staffing, and when we get, you know, the final, um, legislative proposal for state aid. I think this is the lowest that we'll be. Again, we have to look out for the fifty student decrease. That's the key. Next, I'm just showing you a, a slide of our student enroll, our pupil enrollment trend from ninety-nine through projected next year. You can see, um, in twelve thirteen, we're at twelve thousand one eighty-eight. This last year, we ended at twelve thousand one ninety-four. It's a six-student increase. It doesn't sound like a lot, but we were budgeting for a two-hundred-and-fifty student decrease. So you could really look at that as a two-hundred-and-fifty-six student increase. I mean, if you wanna be the optimist and be positive. Uh, so next year, we're looking at a fifty student decrease coming at twelve thousand one forty-four. Going forward, I'm just showing you sort of a pie chart, showing you where the money comes from. State sources naturally is where all of our money comes from, seventy-nine percent. Breakdown of where we spend versus, you know, each area, classroom instruction, maintenance, transportation. I'll just give you a pictorial of that. And then our fund balance, if, this goes back to proposal A, when we were actually in a deficit of about two million dollars. You can see some of the years when we had the Wayne Westland language, um, definitely was instrumental to our fund balance through the, uh, two thousands and up until about two years ago. And when we lost the language, Dr. Berisi is still working on that, and just gives you a bar graph of where we're at. That is really everything on the, uh, budget. Now I'm gonna go into the tax levy, talk about that, and then when we come out, you can vote on the tax levy, then the budget.
Okay.
The, uh, tax levy resolution is to, uh, fund our debt, um, and, oh... Because of the three-point-one percent decrease, overall decrease, we're looking at a slightly higher, uh, debt millage. Our debt millage would go from five-point-two-six mils up to five-point-four-six mils. But as you know, we have a refunding issue coming out, and that will take effect in the next year. We have to fund the current, um, debt. So with that, we're at five-point-four-six. Next year, uh, I think you will see that drop, provided we don't have a large decrease in, um, property values again.
At what time will we, of the year, will we know what, what the debt is that we're gonna have to fund?
Uh, we will, uh, we actually price in mid-July, close in August. So we should know, you know, by the start of the next school year, what it would be, so. Next is just a, uh, bar graph showing you the debt levy trend. And that, I'm sorry.
Question?
Yeah.
Just for clarification for the public out there, as well as the people in the audit. The reason for the downward and upward trend is because of the property value...
Absolutely.
That we lost in two thousand and eight, on, well, earlier to, I, I, I won't, I don't know the exact... We all know that property values have gone down, and hopefully they've stabilized a little bit and on the way back a little bit. So, uh, you know, you can't produce the same amount of money with the, with a three-point levy when you have a hundred million dollars less than assessment, or property, property value, that's the word, assessment, measure. So, that's, that's the reason, and your estimation is that things are gonna get better hopefully next year, or at least keep rising in revenues or property values, and we'll, we can see this debt levy drop, 'cause we're obligated by law to fund it.
You guys see the refunder have an impact on this, and next year, if we, you know, are level or have a, um, increase in property values, this should go down.
Thank you.
And, um, that is everything I have for the budget and tax hearing.
Okay, so you, okay, so we're gonna, well, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax levy for item C.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Griffin?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Schofield. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Now we need a motion for the budget. Or have you done?
Yes, please.
Okay. Now, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the general appropriations budget. Moved by Mr. Buckaloo?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Schofield. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, item E?
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam President. Our next, uh, item is a resolution authorizing a line of cred, credit for school operations. Uh, this is a process that we normally do. It is borrowing on a short-term basis, so we can meet obligations until we receive our state aid. State aid is received on the twentieth of every month, except for September. We have a two-month break from August twentieth to October twentieth, and, uh, that's often when districts have to borrow. What we're asking for, this year, we're increasing to a eight-million-dollar line of credit from six million dollars in the current year. Uh, again, now you're seeing the effect of a lower fund balance. With a lower fund balance, our cash flow is lower, so we have to increase the line of credit and might have to borrow more. The line of credit is with Chase, uh, which is our depository, um, and the rate will be a two-point-oh-five percent interest rate. And, um, you know, in finance committee, we discussed doing a state note versus a line of credit. Uh, line of credit is much more inexpensive. You can control it more with a state note. You have to take it out for the full year, so you have interest for the full year. Uh, in the current year, we have borrowed four times on the line of credit. Um, but it's, again, usually, you know, if, uh, state aid note comes in on the twentieth, which is, let's say, a Wednesday, and we have payroll the previous Friday, we have to fund it. So it's usually very short-term, you know, a week or less, so.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you haven't called the question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, authorize a line of credit for school operations.
Moved by Dr. Weaver?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Griffin? Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Let the motion reflect, uh, let the...
Seven, seven zero.
Record reflects, seven zero. Item F, please.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Uh, next resolution is, uh, recommendation to award food service management contract. This is for a, uh, five-year period. The process, we started in February. Um, it's, uh, a process that is tightly controlled by MDE. We were provided a list of vendors to send an invitation to. We sent it to sixteen, uh, vendors. Of that, we had three vendors, uh, appear for the pre-bid meeting, uh, bid meeting, where we, um, purchasing, and, uh, Dave Callmire will take people around the district. They'll visit the cafeterias, uh, the kitchens, and, uh, ask questions, make notes. We had, uh, three vendors. We had Chartwell, Aramark, and a new vendor, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot the name, they're out in Minnesota. They're actually, you know, um, as it turns out, we only had one vendor bid, and that was Aramark. Terms are similar to the previous five-year contract. Um, and the contract, again, is for five years, but it's a series of one-year contracts, where we will have to bring this to you each year. Uh, we'll have to get approval from the Michigan Department of Education before you can approve the contract, and again, you approve it for each year.
But you only do the bid once every five years?
Once, yes, once every five years. Uh, it, it's a pretty intense bidding process, and, uh, we actually have Dave Palmer and Joanne Gross. Uh, Joanne Gross is the onsite manager for Aramark, and, uh, Dave Palmer is the, uh, regional manager for Aramark.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd make a motion to award the food service management contract to Aramark as prescribed by Mr. Larson Schidler.
Moved by Dr. Weaver? Supported by, um, Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion?
I need to say something. As my usual statement every year, because my daughter still works for Aramark, uh, in another state, her job is not contingent on whether we approve this contract with Aramark, and nor is Aramark contingent on the fact that my daughter works for them in another state. So with that said, I will be voting.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, seven zero vote. Item G?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, for the cooperative agreement for Jefferson Barnes Elementary School with the city of, uh, Westland, I think I'll turn over to Dr. Berisi to discuss that.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. The, um, the cooperative agreement we have between our school district and the city of Westland is, uh, been developed in partnership as an agreement between two public entities that, that has some interesting provisions, and, uh, this agreement has been brought to the finance committee several times for discussion. It has also been acknowledged here at the Board of Education regarding, um, the minutes from the finance committee and our intent to work in cooperation with the city of Westland. We have, um, Mrs. Joanne Campbell that's with us this evening. That is also, uh, the, the director of housing and the Dorsey Center for the city of Westland, who really is responsible for applying for and receiving a very significant grant of over a half a million dollars in order to pursue this partnership and, and, and take that school over and provide renovations, and the intent is to turn it into a community center for that Norwayne community. So that would be the Jefferson Barnes with, uh, in partnership with the city of Westland. It is a long-term partnership, as required by the, uh, the federal neighborhood stabilization, um, group. And that might not be the, the, the exact name of it, but it's the Neighborhood Stabilization Fund that provides the grant money. And, um, it's a win-win for the entire community. We will not have to demolish that building and spend, uh, a significant amount of money in doing so. It will alleviate, uh, the utility costs, and it'll certainly serve that community extremely well. And I know that the association president is with us here this evening too, and they're very excited about this partnership and the recommended approval to the Board of, of Education. So, uh, we are, we're asking you to move forward with this agreement and approve it. It's a win-win for everybody involved.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move to, uh, approve the, uh, cooperative agreement.
Okay, moved by Mr. Griffin. And I'll support it. Supported by Mrs. Schofield. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I know this is a long night, so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna try to keep this short, but I, when this first came before this board and the city, uh, it's just a win-win for this whole community. Uh, you know, I, I note that Ms. Campbell's here and the president of the association who've been around for a long time and, uh, have worked hard to make that community a better place and, uh, to live and a better, uh, opportunity in that community for working with the municipality, been very active. And I just, uh, this is one of those that you really enjoy talking about and the benefits that's gonna happen and bring to our community because of Ms. Campbell's hard work for the grant and, uh, and the community association helping her. Uh, I'm really looking forward to this and, uh, the kinds of things it's gonna do for our community because what I see, we're gonna have better housing, we're gonna have people that want to come to our community, which is gonna benefit our school district because the kids are gonna be in our school district there, uh, and it's just a win-win. Uh, and, uh, everything about it, there's nothing I see in this other than, you know, we talk about the money, but I see it as a, a win for the school district and making a better housing area for more students to come, for parents to want to live in our community. And, and I really applaud all the parties that took part in this. They have my, uh, deepest, uh, appreciation for it and I'm sure that the board feels the same way. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Um, just one comment. Uh-huh. Um, I would also like to thank Mrs. Campbell for her hard work. Um, we started talking about this several years ago and it's nice to see it actually happen. I think it's going to, uh, really make a big impact in that area and provide services that that area so desperately needs. So, um, I thank you for pursuing it, Mr. Johnson. I thank you for, for being right there and, uh, and being the support for trying to make the community a better community and a better neighborhood.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, I'd really like to, what Mr. Johnson, uh, the president, if the board would consent, uh, would like to say to the board about this.
Can we do the vote and then he can have a chance to?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Can we finish the discussion? I actually, yeah, I do. I have a question. As far as, um, is there a need for a certificate of occupancy or any concerns with the building passing inspections? Will that be necessary?
It will not be used as a school, therefore, um, it will not go through the traditional fire marshal inspection for school use. We don't anticipate any occupancy issues.
If there were to be issues, who would be held liable financially?
I think part of the grant would pay for the accommodation of making some repairs because that was written into the grant. Um, we don't anticipate that, Mrs. Madison, but, uh, if the grant didn't cover that, we certainly are not responsible for any of that. Um, there could be some future discussions perhaps, but we don't anticipate it.
Any more discussion?
This, this agreement holds the school district, let me just make that clear, holds the school district harmless.
Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Madison?
No.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the motion, uh, let the record reflect a six-one vote. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, I would thank you very much. We're really excited about this opportunity and Trav, you're spot-on. Uh, this is really gonna make a significant difference in the Norwayne community. Uh, we're, we're, we've already made a difference, but this is really gonna bring back the community that we lost when the decision was made to close the schools. So we thank you very much for your role of confidence and you're gonna be very proud of what this cooperation and cooperative agreement will result in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number three-four-three.
I was gonna say, before we continue, uh, point of order. We've gone through a lot of resolutions, uh, resolutions. Do I need to read all of these?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on.
Okay. Um, item number three-four-three-point-one-four. Um, item A, student reinstatement, A seven, Ms., or Dr. Sala.
Thank you, Madam President. To answer your question, Ms. uh, Madell, there are a couple of resolutions you will unfortunately have to read this evening. And this is one of them.
Well, the text one was pretty long. That's why I was getting in the panic.
You dodged the bullet on that one. Uh, on May twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, a committee, uh, made up of two board members, one parent, one administrator, and one teacher met to consider the reinstatement for student A seven and the recommendation to the full board for consideration this evening is student A seven displaced at Marshall Upper Elementary School for the twenty-fourteen-fifteen school year, that the student conduct him or herself at all times in strict conformity with the district's student code of conduct, that the, the parent and student understand and agree that if in the district's sole and exclusive discretion, the student violates the student code of conduct, that the district will immediately suspend the student and initiate due process procedures. And lastly, that the student and parent will adhere to all stipulations of a strict discipline contract as a result of reinstatement to the school district if the board chooses to reinstate student A seven. So with that said, I would need a, a motion a second. I would need, uh, Madam Secretary to read the resolution into the minutes and a vote.
Okay. Uh, motion is, uh, I entertain a motion.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to reinstate student A seven under the parameters listed by our deputy superintendent.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Weaver.
I'll second.
Supported by Ms. Madell. Um, any discussion, very limited, if any. Okay. And if you could go ahead and read the resolution into?
Whereas the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools convened on June ninth, twenty-fourteen pursuant to Michigan case law three-hundred-eighty-one-three-one-one, section five subsection F, to consider the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of expelled student A seven and to consider the report and recommendation of the, the reinstatement committee previously appointed by the Board of Education pursuant to Michigan case law eight, I'm sorry, three-hundred-eighty-one-two-one-one, section five subsection D. Whereas the Board of Education is persuaded that student A seven should be reinstated to the Wayne Westland Community Schools, subject to the following terms and conditions. One, placement at Marshall Upper Elementary School for the school, for the year, I'm sorry, for the twenty-fourteen-twenty-fifteen school year. Two, the student will conduct himself, herself at all times in strict conformity with the district's student code of conduct. Three, the parent and the student understand and agree that if the district's sole and exclusive discretion, the student violates the student code of conduct in any way, the district will immediately suspend the student and initiate due process procedures to permanently expel the student from the district. Four, the student and parent will adhere to all stipulations of a strict discipline contract. Therefore, it is resolved that the reinstatement committee report and recommendation is hereby adopted by the Board of Education and that for the reasons stated herein, the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of student A seven is hereby granted, subject to strict compliance with the terms and conditions set forth above. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution will be provided to the student and parent.
Do a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Seven-zero.
Seven-zero.
Did you finish the end of it? It's just, yeah, it's a nice, okay, let's see.
All right. Moving on to item number three-four-four-point-one-four, uh, new board policy. Dr. Sala?
Thank you. Policy nine-three-seven-six is, uh, short, sweet, and to the point, Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, also known as COPA policy. Uh, because it is such a short policy, I will read it, uh, for the board into the record. Uh, it is the policy of the Wayne Westland Community Schools to be in compliance with the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, COPA, of nineteen-ninety-eight as may be applicable. The superintendent shall develop and adopt administrative regulations and/or guidelines that ensure the district is in compliance with such provisions. Uh, the district will work with legal counsel, Clark Hill, to develop administrative guidelines. In fact, I have a draft copy. They're very straightforward. Uh, COPA is required for advertising specifically with, uh, outside entities. Uh, for example, Radio Disney is a company that we do some marketing with during the kindergarten roundup marketing campaign. And when we place banner ads on their internet website, we are required to have this COPA webs, this COPA policy on file in our policy book so that they can advertise showing our images, pictures of children, and so on and so forth.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Schofield.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Seven-zero.
Let the record reflect the seven-zero vote. Item number three-four-five-point-one-four, resolution, compliance with PA fifty-three of two thousand-and-eleven and discontinuation of the union dues collection. Dr. Barisi.
Yes, and Madam President, members of the board and our listening audience, uh, this is, um, a short resolution that just brings you in compliance with the law. Um, I will refer to Dr. Sala. He's brought this to the, um, the Subcommittee on Policy and has had other discussions. You have a letter from the school attorney that also makes the re- recommendation that now is the time to rescind a previous resolution that you had passed regarding the union due deductions. So, um, if there are any other questions, uh, Dr. Sala would be happy to, um, talk to the issue.
Thank you, Dr. Barisi. Uh, I'll be brief, but I, I do want to provide the entire board with an update regarding what has transpired regarding PA fifty-three since, uh, the resolution was passed earlier this school year. After the resolution was passed earlier this school year, because there was some uncertainty in the law at that point and, and our board took action to, uh, wait until we were certain that it was appropriate, uh, to, uh, to essentially stop, uh, stop collecting union dues on behalf of, of the union. Several things have taken place. The Lansing School District filed a declaratory action to, to obtain a court ruling. Uh, Judge Collette issued an opinion and an order on March twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen that PA fifty-three required districts to discontinue the collection of dues. On April twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, unions filed, uh, the union filed for reconsideration and subsequently on May sixth, Judge Collette, Judge Collette denied that motion of the union. Uh, at that point, the, the unions have filed no further appeals, uh, and thus, the opinion of your legal counsel is to, uh, comply with PA fifty-three, uh, which prohibits public schools from collecting union dues, uh, through payroll deductions. So that's the matter for consideration this evening.
Okay.
And this is a resolution that I would recommend reading into the record.
Okay, that was my next question. Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time. Okay. Do we have to?
I, no, I, I want to speak, but I'll wait for the motion. I'll speak prior to the motion.
Madam President, I move that we come into compliance with PA fifty-three of two thousand-and-eleven and, uh, discontinuation of union dues collection.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Any support?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buckaloo. Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could. I, two things. One is that I am totally opposed to the state statute, always have been and will continue to be because I think it, it, and it has the ability to inhibit the formation of organizations, uh, in this case, uh, unions. So that's just my personal position and, uh, I have it for a lot of good reasons. I think, I, I think that those, uh, people deserve to have some form of, uh, ready, uh, made, uh, money that they can use to benefit the members. However, having said that, I also took an oath of office as a public official to uphold the law. And therefore, I will vote for this motion, but reluctantly based on the fact that I disagree with the law. Now, my option is obviously to try to change the law, which I, uh, would join with people to try to do, but, uh, I wanted to make that statement because I think the people should know, uh, where you're at when you're on a public position like such as this on this board. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
As far as voting, is everyone allowed to vote, being this impacts financial with anyone who's related to anyone with the recent law changes? Is it a conflict of interest?
No, it's, it's not a contract. That law specifically deals with voting for contracts and I don't, I don't see that as problematic here.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Um, I just, uh, agree with what, um, my colleague said is that, you know, I don't understand why they felt it was necessary to, to enact this law. Um, it's a whole lot easier for everyone concerned. It's just one more item that payroll plugs into the computer. I mean, it's not something they're doing by hand. The computer does it all. I mean, they do garnishments, they do taxes, they do lots of other things, but, um, it is the law and so therefore, we have to uphold the law. That's the oath we take, uh, whether we agree with the law or not. And so our option is to change it in Lansing.
Change it, please. Yeah, I'm just gonna pile on. It's a crummy piece of legislation and that's a highly technical word, by the way, crummy. There's nothing we can do about it. It is the law. And as you heard, as Mrs. Schofield took the oath of office, we swore that we would uphold the law and we're between a rock and a hard place here.
And not to be redundant, but I feel the same as my, uh, colleagues as well. Um, with that being said, let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
I vote yes reluctantly. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect the seven-zero vote. Moving on to item number three-four-six-point-one-four, resolution.
I have to, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we'll go back.
Sorry. I have to read the resolution.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools, Wayne County, Michigan, held the district on the ninth day of June, twenty-fourteen at seven PM local time. Members present, all of us, there was nobody absent. Board resolution regarding compliance with PA fifty-three of twenty-eleven and the discontinuation of union dues collection. The following preamble and resolution were offered by member Weaver and supported by member Buckaloo, whereas the Board of Education recognizes and acknowledges that it was sworn, has, that it has a sworn duty to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Michigan Constitution of nineteen-sixty-three and all duly enacted laws as interpreted and applied by the courts. Whereas Public Act fifty-three of twenty-eleven went, which went into effect March sixteenth, twenty-twelve, prohibits public school districts from collecting union dues through the public school districts' payroll deduction procedures. Whereas a federal district court issued a preliminary injunction against the enforcement of PA fifty-three on June eleventh, twenty-twelve pending a challenge to whether such act was constitutional. Whereas such preliminary injunction was dissolved on July tenth, twenty-thirteen, leaving unresolved the legal question of whether the prohibition of PA fifty-three was applicable to public school districts which entered into collective bargaining agreements while the aforementioned preliminary injunction was in effect, which situation applied to all of the current collective bargaining agreements in the district. Whereas in opinions and orders issued on March twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen and April twenty-fourth, twenty-fourteen, the- Whereas, in opinions and orders issued on March 27, 2014 and April 24, 2014, the Ingham County Circuit Court ruled that 2011 Public Act 53 is applicable to public school collective bargaining agreements entered into after PA 53 went into effect, notwithstanding the federal district court order enjoining 2011 PA 53 had been in effect when such collective bargaining agreements were ratified, and whereas, the time for appealing said court ruling expired on May 27, 2014, and said ruling has now gone into effect. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent or his designee is directed to take all action necessary to comply with 2011 Public Act 53 and terminate the collection of union dues no later than the beginning of the next school year. There were seven yays and zero nays. Motion declared adopted.
Item number three, four, six, point one, four, resolution of 2014, 2015 MHSAA membership. Dr. Berisi.
Yes, this is just a technicality. It comes before the board every year, and we're asking you to pass a resolution that authorizes both John Glenn and Wayne Memorial High Schools, as well as our two middle schools, to join the Michigan High School Athletic Association. So resolution's there, no need to read it. The recommended motion is as written.
Okay. I entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Griffin, supported by Mrs. Schofield. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect the seven zero vote. Moving on to item number three, four, seven, point one, four, Board of Education Committee Reports, and I believe we only have one from the Finance. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Item one, the final budget amendment, which was discussed tonight and voted on. Discussion of the fiscal 1314 final budget amendment that will go before the Board of Education for approval at the regular meeting on June 9, 2014. Fiscal 1415 General Appropriations Resolution. Jim Larson Schidler reviewed the proposed budget for fiscal 1415 and reviewed the presentation that will be given for the June 9 meeting. Discussion of general fund budget and assumptions used. Committee members were to give a copy of the General Appropriations Resolution, the tax levy resolution, the L 4029, and the line of credit resolution that will all go to the Board of Education for approval at the meeting on June 9, 2014. The committee reviewed and discussed all of these documents. Item three, food services contract, fiscal, I'm sorry, fiscal 1415 food service contract has been approved by MDE and will go before the Board of Education on the June 9 date. Item four, City of Westland lease agreement for Jefferson Barnes. The committee reviewed the lease agreement between the City of Westland and Wayne Westland Community Schools. Item five, Union Dues Deduction Resolution. The committee discussed the deduction of union dues for employees and the actions of the board needs to take to resolve this issue. Respectfully submitted, Jim Larson Schidler, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, four, eight, point one, four, Superintendent Report.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board listening on, it's been a long evening.
I'm sorry, Dr. Berisi.
Yeah.
Should we have one?
We have a copy of it.
Oh, policy?
Policy.
Okay. I have it right here. I'm sorry, we have one more report.
I have it.
Okay. All right. Sorry, this is the notes from the Policy Committee that was held May 28, 2014. Present, Carol Medel, Sally Madison, Tom Buckaloo, Paul Sala. I gave everybody a breakdown of what COPA stood for, which is Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. This piece of legislation was enacted in 1998. This language will come to the board for approval in June. This policy basically states that we will comply with the law and that the superintendent shall develop and adopt administrative regulations, guidelines, that ensure that we are complying with the provisions of this act. A copy will be provided to you before the board meeting. Resolution to rescind union dues collection. This is being drafted by our attorney and will come to the board at the June meeting. With a recent court ruling and appeals not being filed, we need to rescind our previous statement on the collection of union dues and put, or put the district in jeopardy of being in noncompliance. This will go into effect for 2014-15 school year. The WWEA leadership has been informed that we need to move forward. This language will come to you before the June meeting. EpiPen legislation. The committee discussed this possible policy language for the August or September meeting. We were shown suggested NEOLA language, but we need to further guidelines from MDE before putting the policy in place. Social media usage policy. This proposed policy was discussed at length, and it was decided to table this policy until details could be explored and the new superintendent is in place. Parent organization involvement policy. The committee was introduced to proposed revisions of policies 9710, 9720, 9730. These policies are in need of updating. The committee was asked to review the proposed language and be prepared to move forward on updating these policies at the next meeting. Trustee Sally Madison will chair the next meeting of this committee, date to be announced. Respectfully submitted, Caroline Medel.
Okay, thank you. That should be all reports at this time, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item number three, four, eight, point one, four. I'm sorry, Dr. Berisi.
Hey, not a problem. We'll try that again. It's been a long evening, so I will make my comments considerably shorter than originally planned. First of all, I'd like to welcome and congratulate publicly, even though we have spoken prior to this evening, Dr. Michelle Harmala's in the audience this evening. As you all know, Dr. Harmala is your new superintendent, beginning July 1st. So welcome, and I will share with you that usually, our meetings aren't quite this long.
You're right at home.
I know, yeah, I know you probably do.
You forward just too short a while. Not much did you say yet.
Okay. Thank you for being here. As this year comes to end, I just want to say thank you to all of our parents, our students, and our staff for another successful year. They all give so much to make sure that our students have what they need and that they experience, you know, a good, successful school year, year after year. And once again, it seems, and we're not quite there, but we're only a day, a couple of days from the end of school. It's been a great year so far, and our school closings seem to get better and better every year. I'd also like to congratulate our 2014 graduates. We had four graduations over the last week and a half, and we had numerous academic awards. So congratulations to all of our students that received academic awards. Congratulations to our graduates of John Glenn, Wayne Memorial, our Tinkham and Alternative Education Center, and also our youth mentorship program at the Henry Ford. It's just wonderful to see all these students succeed and get ready for the next chapter in their life. Lastly, as most of you know, this is my last official meeting this evening, and I've been with you for 17 years as your superintendent. I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to our parents, once again, students, staff, and certainly all of our community stakeholders for their overwhelming support over the years. It's only because of the partnership we've had with all of them that we've been able to work in collaboration and really transform Wayne Westland Schools into a 21st century learning community, which offers our students some of the best educational opportunities that you'll find anywhere in the state. I'd like to specifically thank the entire administrative staff for their tireless work and their devotion to ensure that our teachers and our students have the necessary resources to provide state-of-the-art education. Thank you all so much. I don't believe that you'll find a staff like this anywhere in the state of that caliber, and again, I just thank you immensely. Lastly, but not least, I'd like to thank Dr. Paul Sala, Cheryl Watson, and my executive secretary, Janice Teague, who's been by my side here in central office for 20 years. Without all of you, the superintendent's office wouldn't be as responsive and operate as smoothly as it does, so thank you so much. And so, as I start my new chapter this evening in my life, that's called retirement, along with my wife Gabby of 41 years at my side, I say goodbye, and I will be forever grateful to each and every one of you. I wish you all God's luck and God's speed, and good luck and God's speed, and I will do anything and everything I can to help in the transition to make sure that Wayne Westland Community Schools continues to excel. That concludes my comments this morning.
You're already in retirement mode.
I'm already in tomorrow morning, I think, thinking about our schedule. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number three, four, nine, point one, four, Citizen Comments. Mr. Madison.
Um, couple of questions. Oh, wait, go ahead.
Go for it.
It's not on out here.
Does it not?
Oh, wait. There it goes.
Okay.
Couple of questions. Under separate cover, the Jefferson Barn Agreement, it's two public identities coming up with an agreement. Why isn't it in the agenda? We can't see it. What are the terms? What's district paying? What are they making? What's the whole story on that one? The school lunch program, we made a deal with Arndberg, Arman, for $1.40 per lunch, but why do we pay $3? Why do our kids pay $3? We're a nonprofit organization. We're making 100% plus profit of our kids to get lunches. We also get Title I money that helps subsidize reduced free lunches, so why are we making money on school lunches? Separate, and the other thing is, I respect everyone's ability to be elected and be on this board, but discussion means discussion. It's not speeches. It sounds like you're running for an office again, like your seat's up, and you want to make a speech on why you're voting this way. You guys all have time at the end of the meeting individually to speak on the meeting. You don't need to make a political speech why you're voting on this. Discussion means discussions, questions to be asked, whatever the case is on what you're voting on, but don't give a political speech on why you're voting this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Furrage.
Try to keep it positive. Just wanted to congratulate the class of 2014. Good luck to those young men and women. And Dr. Berisi, what a fantastic speech you gave at the commencement. I hope they, those graduates heed your words. And lastly, we still haven't heard the details of Dr. Berisi's retirement package. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beck.
Ms. Medel was simply trying to help you with the wording, since you seemed to have been lost. If you would have read that first motion as clearly as you read the last five, she would have stepped in. She was the recording secretary and simply was trying to help you out. When we came back from closed session to Mr. Griffin, I think it was inappropriate for you to use Ms. Schofield's name and what she had said during that closed session when you were giving your own comments. I think that was inappropriate. Last meeting, Mr. Weaver, you made, once again, a comment saying that the citizen should not have control over the agenda. Once again, I take issue with your statements, as I did after the meeting, and you stated to me that, now I'll just read the policy for you, 1320, I thought we were done with it, but. "A request by the public to place an agenda, place an item on the agenda must be made to the superintendent or president at least seven days in advance of the meeting, at which it is desired to have the item discussed. The request should be brief statement of the matter to be brought before the board along with the background information available, which could be provided to the board in advance of the meeting. The superintendent, in consultation with the president, shall determine whether or not the matter is an appropriate agenda item for the meeting or a future meeting. The superintendent shall notify the person making the request whether or not the item will be placed on the agenda. If the item is placed on the agenda, the person making the request shall be notified within a reasonable amount of time to present and discuss the issue." The citizens do not have control over this board. The seven of you, through numerous here checks and balances, can deny that request. So for you to say that you have an issue with us taking control of the agenda is just not true. And I stated after the meeting, when I tried to discuss this with you, to stop sticking your foot in your mouth, and you said, "It's your foot. I'll leave it in my mouth if I want to." So when you want to talk to the citizens, you want to make these kind of ridiculous comments that you've made month after month, which you did in September, when all the, when this room was packed, when the baseball coach was let go, and citizens wanted to discuss that issue, the president Medel at the time waived her right to close citizens' comments at 30 minutes and let the people speak, and you spoke up at that meeting and said you disagreed with them doing so. You can look at the September meeting on the website for yourself, but it's highly disrespectful the way you continually, continually, month after month, tell the citizens that either you shouldn't be or you should not be following your procedures and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Monnet.
I'm sorry, Councilman Monnet.
Evening. Hopefully, this will be a breath of fresh air. Madam President, school board members, Dr. Berisi, it's great to be back here, to see all of you and all of my old friends. It's great to revisit. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Schofield on her return to the board. I don't know where you're going to find time for this, Cindy. You're so busy with what's happening north or south of here, so I hope that doesn't interfere. And while I was a little bit disappointed you went into closed session today, I actually ended up with a positive, because I was able to speak with Mrs. Harmala and got to know her a little bit, even though the reports I had were very positive coming in, but thank you for that conversation. And congratulations to the board on her selection. I think that was very, very appropriate and very timely. Now, the last thing I want to do to congratulate is Dr. Berisi, and I would be remiss if I didn't have something to say, and I felt that this is the best venue to say that, so I will proceed. Because you know me, I've got to have something to refer to, right? Okay, I was fortunate to work with Dr. Berisi my entire career as a school board member. I also was honored to work closely with him multiple years as president. He always allowed me the best of himself, I'm sorry, he always showed me the best of himself. I never saw anything less. His work ethic is second to none. His ability to make it happen, well noted. Congratulations, Dr. Berisi. Your retirement is well earned and much deserved. You'll be sorely missed and irreplaceable. You led this district to great heights and worked feverishly to keep up those levels despite the financial challenges that surfaced. You proactively trimmed the fat to keep ensuing cuts in check. Because of that, our kids are able to experience the quality education that the district continues to provide. Timely decisions like closing schools are difficult, but the right thing to do. You were able to show how your ability to see what lies ahead gave you the insight to direct your staff appropriately and offer wise advice to your board. As I was contemplating the nature of my words today, I was impressed by a quote that has been attributed to two different people, Ralph Waldo Emerson and Oliver Wendell Holmes. This quote speaks to the purpose of why we are here. It says, "What lies behind us and what lies before us are tiny matters compared to what lies within us. What lies behind you is the work and career that you have just completed. I feel confident when I say that your value to this district will be missed. Will we miss you? Of course, but time dictates that our association must come to an end. It's a credit to you that the decision to leave your career was made on your own terms. That certainly is what we all strive for. What lies before you? That is a question that only you can answer." That is a question that only you can answer. Typically, retirement is a time to pursue other interests. It is important that you are able to live the life you truly enjoy as your new full-time occupation. I think that staying active is also an important goal. Don't let time catch up with you, make it run you down. And what lies within you? Is it the feeling of contentment of a job well done and the respect of your peers? Or can it be the feeling of confidence that you are embarking on a greatly anticipated adventure of your own making? Or maybe it is the feeling of anticipation of what the future may bring? In my opinion, your mental serenity is what will truly make your retirement the golden time it is supposed to be. So cast away your troubles during these golden years. As you pass the torch, you can rest easy in the knowledge that you always acted in the best interests of the students of the district. That is a legacy that cannot be surpassed. So enjoy your life as a retiree, experience the things you could not as a working person. Personally, I want to thank you for your knowledge, your diligence, your foresight, your tolerance, your caring, and your friendship. Enjoy your new career." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Monnet.
Thank you for letting me go over a little bit.
I felt that this is his, Dr. Berisi's, last meeting, and he deserves to hear, and you're also a public figure in this area too, so. I'm sorry, I don't, would you come to, if you'd tell me your name? I apologize.
I don't know this gentleman over here, but 20 years is a long time.
I'm sorry, can we?
My name is Ray Schuholtz.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a couple of comments. I just wanted to say, congratulations to you and your retirement, and I want to say, Cindy, good luck again on the board.
Thank you.
But I'm Ray Schuholtz, and I'm a chairperson of the Disability Concern, very active guy here, and I like to see the board more, work with the citizens, listen to the citizens what they have to say. I think it's very important that, you know, not, y'all need to work together, and that's the way I see things too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, okay. All right. Moving on to item number 350.14, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Mrs. Madison.
I'd like to say congratulations to the class of 2014, and welcome back to Cindy Schofield, and farewell to Dr. Berisi, and to enjoy your future endeavors, and enjoy your new job as retirement. I hear it's supposed to be a job that is called retirement, so enjoy. And I'd also like to welcome Dr. Harmala. It's nice to see you out here tonight, and we're looking very forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. Mr. Griffin.
Thank you. I'd like to commend the two Johnson brothers for leading the board in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to acknowledge all the scholarship recipients that were here before the board tonight, Crystal Fletcher, Carlos Burnell, Kelly Aegis, Bethany Lilligwin, and Jennifer Tagano. I, you know, I think the public needs to see the kinds of student population that we have and judge that as part of their judgment on the school district. And last, and I know it's a long night, but I, you know, I'd just been on the board a couple of years here. I was on the board back in '72, but I want to, I knew Greg Berisi's brother as finance director back in '72, and I'd not gotten to know Greg until my public service and now as superintendent. I, it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to replace a 17-year superintendent. I think you may be the longest, you're certainly the longest-serving one in our district. Most of them were 10 years, but you're going to be one of the longest-serving in the entire state of Michigan, and your legacy is a bright one. We're going to miss your wisdom, your ability to make the tough, tough, tough decisions, look into the future. I wish you Godspeed and well for you and your family, but it's time to have a great retirement, and it's been a pleasure knowing you and working with you, and I'm sure we'll see each other in the future also as individuals. Thank you so much for your service to this school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mrs. Schofield.
Well, I'm back, briefly. First of all, I would like to talk about the Gates Millennium Scholarship recipients. I think it was back in 2008 when we had our first scholarship recipient that won the Gates Scholarship, and Mr. Alberks Nottingham has had. And I think at that time, we thought, I mean, we were just kind of taken back, that we could have a student that could compete at that level. And I guess the message that I want to give to the public is that great things do happen in both of our high schools and in our career tech program. Students don't win scholarships of this caliber without an educational system that is supporting them throughout their career, and they don't win scholarships of this caliber without parents that are supporting them. My brother went, years ago, went to the Center for Creative Studies, and it was, was very competitive then, and it's even more competitive today. And when you see the caliber of artwork that is coming out of our career tech programs that allow students to have scholarships of this caliber, and this is just the iceberg. When you look at the millions of dollars of scholarship money that our students were awarded this year, you know great things are happening because scholarships are very competitive, and they're not given away by universities and by foundations lightly. There's many, many who apply who don't receive, and I just, you know, I want to encourage parents to know that their children are in a good spot. If they, if they take advantage of what the district offers, they can do very well. You know, we made some hard decisions tonight on a number of issues. That is our job as board people, board members. It's the administration's job to give us those, that information we need to make those decisions, and I think, Dr. Berisi, throughout the time I've worked with you, I started in 1997, I was the Switzer PTA president, and I came to a meeting, and we were going to do a bond issue, and somehow, Mr. Monnet and I, and Mr. Monnet's wife, ended up chairing that committee, and I'm not quite sure, I guess, I guess we didn't step backward fast enough, and Dr. Berisi was the new superintendent, and we, that was the beginning of my involvement at a district level. And throughout, from that bond issue to revamping the curriculum, in those, those early years of, when I was on the board, we just did massive changes of curriculum. Your work that you did in Lansing to fight for Wayne Westland Language and to fight for other issues that impacted our students, you know, throughout all of it, one thing was very clear, that the students were first, and the, and there might be adult issues that had to be dealt with, but those adult issues weren't going to interfere with the education that our students received. And you made that very clear early on, that it was the kids that mattered. And I think that's a legacy that you will take from here, from, that that legacy will remain in this district, that we will look back and we will know that you put the children of this district first in every decision that you made. And I never, I was never afraid that the information that you gave, that you were going to give me would be inaccurate, because I knew that you had high moral and ethical standards, and when you put that with putting the kids first, we would always make the right decision. So I thank you for your leadership, and I thank you for all that you've given to this district, both you and your wife, and I truly appreciate the hours you've given. And Mr. Sala, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize that this is also your last board meeting, and we, we will miss you also. Good luck. We will probably be seeing you around in a different role as you come over from Wayne County RISA, but best of luck with your future endeavors over there also.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Has already been said, welcome to Dr. Harmala, and thank her for being with us tonight. Also, welcome to Mrs. Schofield, back to the Board of Education for however long or short it may be. And also, I would like to say personally, I had this in my notes previous. I don't need to be reminded about good manners, but I will say this, I apologize for the gruffness of my voice earlier. I would just ask in future that, that I allow, am allowed to personally complete any motions that I might present to this board. Thank you. Also, I'd like to take a moment this evening to thank Dr. Berisi for his many years of service to the Wayne Westland School District. He has served as high school teacher, department chair, assistant principal, vocational director, assistant superintendent, and also is superintendent of Wayne Westland School District, some 41 years of service. During his 17-years tenure as superintendent, he has been personally responsible for raising over $214 million of income for our district, which includes the '98 Bond Fund, the $28 million sinking fund that was passed, $78 million in our Wayne Westland Language after Proposal A. Under his leadership, just a couple of things here, 14 schools have received the Governor's Golden Apple Award. We've established a district-wide talented and gifted program, first grade, class reduction size, established the JR OTC program for both high schools, and time would not permit for me to go on, but I do want to say out of my heart that I appreciate your leadership, Dr. Berisi, and thank you for being with us for 17 years as superintendent.
... garnered for themselves through programs offered here at Wayne Westland. That's quite impressive. It was a high point for me this evening. The budget, Mr. Larson Schidler, you got me when you said that there are no cuts to programs, and that's, that's a real positive thing. And at the under, other end of it, this is the year where maybe we bottom out, turn the corner, and financially get our feet back on the ground and headed in the right So, these are all good things, and I just couldn't be more happy about them. I've never felt the need to defend a vote that I've taken on the board. I've been on the board almost three years now. Tonight, I think I need to do this. We voted non-renewal of a contract this year, a first-year teacher. It's hard to tell the value of somebody after such a short period of time. It would have been wonderful if, if there had been an opportunity for further review, but that's not the prerogative of the board. We have to take the information that's given to us. We have to trust the people who, who go through the process of evaluation. We have to move forward. My heart was not with the vote, but I think my head was. And the same thing is true of PA 53. There hasn't been a piece of legislation come out of Lansing in the last five or 10 years that it's more onerous than that one is. It really is, it's mean-spirited. It serves no function. And yet, the appeal is exhausted. There will be no further appeals from, from the EA because that time has passed, and we all took an oath to comply with the law. And so, the right-headed thing to do was to vote to rescind our decision earlier in the year to continue collecting dues for the union. So we did the right thing, but if I could follow my heart, we would have gone in a different direction. I want to say goodbye to Dr. Sala, wish you well in your new employment. Fortunately, you're not going to be too far away, and I know we'll see one another again. Dr. Berisi, good luck in your new non-employment. I hope you get on a stream and catch some more fish. And I saw the picture in the paper, that was an amazing animal that you had there. Welcome, Dr. Harmala. I hope we don't have these long meetings in the future. And welcome back, Mrs. Schofield. It's always good to have you with us. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Butler and Mrs. Mandell.
Well, it wouldn't be a monthly meeting without mentioning that in front of you is the monthly report from the Stoudemeyer Head Start Program, and also the final expense report. Their calendar year begins May 1st, so that's why you've got a final report right now. With Head Start, they participated in the Memorial Day Parade that was held Memorial Day weekend, and 99% of those little bodies made it all the way to the city of Wayne, whether they were in a stroller, or in a wagon, or on a bicycle. Only a couple of kids bailed and got on the bus with me, because I know better. I was able to, along with several of you, attend a lot of great ceremonies at the end of the school year, whether it was at a middle school, or whether it was at a high school, or whether it was at a JR OTC program. I am so proud of our students in our district. They are great representatives of what this community has to offer. Also, going to the distinguished alumni, we have some great alumni who grew up here, went to school here, and give back to our community, and they need to be valued for what their contributions have brought to our school district. I got a chance to go to Stevenson, where the Career Tech students and staff came over and helped launch rockets. I understand they also do it at Franklin Middle School, too. The kids have a great time using their math and science skills, along with getting acquainted with some of the instructors that are at the Career Tech. Again, congratulations, Cindy, and to our students who were at the beginning of our program, again, the brightest and best that this district has to offer. And our two brand-new administrators, good luck. This has been quite the unique school year, whether it was the weather, or whether it was situations that went on in the school district, whether it was illnesses, whatever it was, this was a unique school year. We had a lot of meetings, and out of that meeting came a brand-new superintendent. So everybody is looking forward to moving forward. Dr. Sala, Dr. Berisi, the only thing I can say is change, change is not a bad thing. Change is always good, and the only thing constant in this world is change. Good luck. I will see you on a monthly basis at the RISA meetings. And, Dr. Berisi, I highly recommend retirement. You can do what you want, and if you remember back, a couple of years ago, I gave a speech at the retirement tea about not having to worry about getting up early to check the level of the snow out in the driveway, whether you were able to get out or not. That is one of the things that I know you will miss, is getting up in the middle of the night, determining whether there was school.
Yes, you're probably correct. That was one of the best parts of my job. I did enjoy it.
Knowing now that you can continue sleeping regardless of what the meteorologist says, I'm sure will be a thrill the first time it happens, so good luck to both of you in the future, moving forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Mandell. Again, thank you to the pledge students, Deion and Jalen Johnson. Every day, our students make me proud to be not only a parent, but a board member in our district, so congratulations to our scholarship winners. I also want to say, welcome back, Cindy. I'm happy to have you. Dr. Sala, I had an opportunity to watch you grow from a teacher up to each level, up to a deputy superintendent, and I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done along the way, and I know there's no doubt in my mind that you won't be successful as you go on to your next endeavor, and I wish you all the luck and Godspeed. Dr. Berisi, 17 years is amazing to be the superintendent, and I have to say that I've had three children under your watch that graduate, graduated, and they're all doing very well. very well, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you have done for this district, the sacrifices you have made, and the opportunities that you have given us as a community and as a school district. I just want you to know that it is with great gratitude that I thank you for everything that you've done to help me as a board member, and everything that you've done for this board. So, with that, Godspeed, congratulations, and enjoy. Enjoy every bit of your retirement.
Well, thank you. And can I just make one comment in closing?
Sure, can.
I, you know, I, I'm very humbled by the kind words and the accolades, but I, I feel just compelled that no one man, no one woman can accomplish what we have collectively in this district by themselves. It's all been because of the team. Without the team, we could not have done what we did, so thank you for all of your accolades, but it's been the team working together that's been able to do the remarkable things for our children and our community, so thank you and good night.
And with that being said, Dr. Harmala, welcome again to the family. We look forward to a new beginning with you next month, and I hope that you will embrace us as your family as we embrace you. With that being said, I want to thank everyone for coming. Thank you for, I know it's been a long night, but sometimes we just have to get the business and take care of it, and I appreciate each and every one of you for coming and taking time out of your day. With that being said, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Moved by Mrs. Madison, seconded by Mr. Buckeloo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.